Okay, go ahead.
Good morning, ladies and gentlemen. Today is Thursday, April 15th, 2021. Commissioner's Court is meeting in special open session. This morning, we're joined by ASL interpreters Dario Garcia and Pat Shook. Would you please rise and join us for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic at which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Item number three is public comment. At this time, we do not have anybody scheduled for a public comment, Judge. Do you have any comments for us today?
No, no, just welcome everyone to our special session today. I look forward to very productive meetings. I always enjoy these presentations being out of the Monday, kind of all the things we have to deal with. And so these are very important for us to get a better sense and understanding. Some don't require action, they just require for us to get a better feel for that. And so I thank everyone that's going to participate today. I think we can make it efficient and as we move forward, there's a lot of challenges that we have still the last two days of our week. So thank you for everyone that's joining us today.
Judge?
Yes, Commissioner Leon?
Yeah, thank you, Judge. Commissioners, just to let you know that the Sheriff's Department, CIT, answered two calls yesterday on their first night. And they were able to respond to, without going into the details of the call, somebody with a knife in the middle of the street and another one assisting another subject. That they were both taken and received the proper care. But my point is that on the very first night, they were able to take care of two calls that could have potentially, potentially have turned out tragically. So great job by the Sheriff's Department. And just to let you know that what a great investment we have made in that, that these two calls may have resulted in the saving of a life. So just thought I'd let you know.
That's great information. Thank you. Very encouraging. Thank you. Caesar?
Thank you, sir. This brings us to item number four from the regular agenda. Receive an update and a presentation from Project Arriba, a community-based nonprofit working to improve the quality of life for El Pasoans.
Thank you, Mr. Roman Ortiz. Are you on the... Oh, there you are. Just a little bit of background, did have an opportunity to meet with some of the members of EPISO and the Faith Network. And so I had a great conversation and I thought it would be a good idea as we move forward to give Mr. Ortiz an opportunity to talk about the program and, you know, some of the highlights. We thank you, Mr. Ortiz, to be here today for this presentation. Thank you.
Well, thank you, County Judge and Commissioners. It's an honor to be here today. Betsy, good morning. We do have a quick presentation. I don't want to take much of your time. So what we're here to do today is, you know, just as the judge mentioned, you did meet with some of our representatives from our partners at EPISO and Border Interfaith. And the discussion about the CARES Act funding came into the picture. I understand if you'll go to the next slide, please. I understand that the county did receive some CARES Act funding. And as your workforce, one of your workforce intermediaries that works within the rural county, we want to make sure at Project Arriba that we understand what your goals are for the CARES Act funding, what, how Project Arriba can help you secure those goals. And we hope that those goals are in obviously workforce development. I want to review quickly what we have done over the past six years, which is some incredible work that we've done as a partnership together. And then I want to talk a little bit about a recommendation for five-year funding contract using the CARES Act funding, if that's something that the court sees as a good solution. So next slide, please. Just to kind of give you a quick overview, we've been in partnership, obviously, since 1999. But over the last six years, we've had a great partnership. We've served 190 individuals overall over the last six years in the rural county. You can see there the different years and the different numbers of people that we served for those contracts. Right now, we're currently in our 2020-2021 contract that will end in September of this year. Next slide. Here's really what's important is, you know, over the last six years, we've helped graduate 103 county, rural county participants. You can see there, year by year, the total number of graduates. And then the real key thing here is the next slide. How many jobs have we been able to do over the last six years? And what we're seeing here is some incredible things. Ninety-two jobs to rural county participants has been obtained. And here's the key thing, the average wages for these jobs is almost $24 an hour and almost $50,000 a year. These individuals came into Project Arriba at or below poverty. You know, you look at the normal demographic, she's about 32 years of age. She has two children. She's primarily single, living off of welfare and food stamps. And with the investment in human capital that the county did, within two years, we were able to change her entire life as well as the entire life of that whole family. When you take a look at 92 jobs, that represents $4.5 million in annual payroll to the rural county. So the return on investment is phenomenal. When you look at the amount that's invested into these folks and then the types of jobs that they're getting and then what their annual payroll is to the rural county. Next slide, please. So one of the recommendations that Project Arriba would like to discuss with the county commissioners and the county judge and to see what your all's recommendation would be is if there's an opportunity to be able to use the CARES Act funding to help serve rural county residents, what we would like to propose is similar to the way we do the city of El Paso, is do a multi-year contract, which helps in a lot of different ways. It helps in being able to, obviously, for cash flow for an organization like Project Arriba, helps us understand what the goals are over the next five years. And it overall to foundations across the country, it helps them see that the county of El Paso is in a long-term relationship with Project Arriba as we want to be, you know, a solution to workforce development within the rural county. What we're proposing is an increase to $125,000 a year over the next five years for serving rural county participants. In total, we would want to serve at a minimum of about 200 individuals in the rural county. Next slide, please. With that, you know, that kind of ends my overall presentation. But if you have any questions or discussions, I still would like to learn a little bit more about the CARES Act funding and what the overall mission is. So thank you for your time and attention.
Thank you, Mr. Ortiz. Commissioners, any comments, questions, comments, anything that... Yeah, Commissioner Stout, please.
Thanks, Judge. Thank you, Mr. Ortiz, for the presentation. I have a question. Right now, we're doing 75. Is that what we've done over the last couple of years?
Just this last year because of the pandemic, we had an overall reduction to 75. The year before that, I think we were at 100,000. Is that correct, Betsy?
Yes, sir.
Okay, so we reduced it this past year because of the pandemic. Okay, well, I mean, my, I don't know if, I don't know if we're allowed to use CARES Act on this. I guess that's a question that we would have to have answered. But, you know, if we can't use CARES Act, maybe we, it's, you know, part of the discussion that we can have for funding with, with the money that's coming in with the American Rescue Plan. You know, I've said many times in the past that, you know, this, this organization provides the best return on investment than any other, than any other economic development investment that we've done. You know, I mean, you look at all the 381 agreements and, you know, they don't even come close to the return on investment. And this is very tangible. You know, it not only gets people out of poverty, but it gets them into jobs. And so I think it's just a really great program. You know, and these are jobs that, of course, our hospitals need filled, right? I mean, this is, it seems to me, we've always been a very medically underserved area. And so, you know, taking these folks and giving them jobs in the healthcare sector, you know, there's really, really no downside. And I think that you all would agree that COVID really, it both revealed gaps and showed how important resiliency is. And programs like this are relatively small investments toward really a lifetime of benefits. And, you know, I think now we need to really strike that balance between, you know, addressing the immediate needs. You know, during COVID, we were basically, you know, building the plane while it was flying, so to speak. And now we have the opportunity to, you know, strike that balance. You know, we did some of that with the rental and small business assistance that we provided. And of course, our contributions to the food bank, you know, when it comes to the immediate needs, just to give a couple of examples. But I think also providing, now we need to look at providing, you know, longer-term foundation for people. And this is, this is an area where we can do that. You know, I just don't think that 2,500 people, you know, Paso would have, would have, would have passed away from COVID, you know, if not for underlying conditions such as diabetes and hypertension. And, and a lot of that has to do with, you know, of course, what, what folks eat, their diet, their exercise, but also lack to access to healthcare. And this program helps, helps fill that gap. So I think that the programs like this really help, can help build our long-term capacity to change, to start changing those factors and, and need, and they need as much support as we can actually give them. And so along those lines, I, you know, I'd like to see us, you know, put some of, put some of the, if we can, CARES Act funding into things like SNAP coordinators and such. But I'm also convinced that we can draw down far more, you know, money in the benefits and the cost of the, you know, of coordinator helping people with food security, bringing money into our local grocers. But I know that we have some research coming up regarding that and I'm eager to see the results. And this helps also with that long-term kind of, that balance and that kind of shift that we're looking to focus more on now coming out of the crisis and moving forward and having a long-term view. And so, I mean, I completely support this. And I, I would actually, as I have advocated in the past, would advocate for doing more than $125,000. I mean, we cut back the allocation that we, that we gave to them. This past year, we were at 100 and they're asking, they're asking for a very small amount to increase. But I know that, Betsy may be able to tell me, but in the past, I think the county or Mr. Ortiz, there was, there was a time that we actually gave $300,000 or $400,000 a year to, to Project Arriba. And at some point, you know, I think that, that we should, we should even look at taking it up to that amount.
Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Ogier, please.
Hi, good morning. I'm sorry, but I'm just not familiar with Project Arriba. Mr. Ortiz, can you explain exactly what it is that the program consists of? Is it a job training program? What exactly is it that you do for the participants of the program?
I'm glad you asked for that, Commissioner Ogier, because that's really important to understand. So go ahead, Mr. Ortiz.
Yes, ma'am. Great question. So Project Arriba is a workforce intermediary. And what we do is we bridge the gap between what employers are needing as far as a skilled workforce. And then we help go find that skilled workforce within our region. Right now, we know that in El Paso County, the healthcare sector is one that is continuing to grow at a very fast pace. And so what we do as an organization is that we go out into the community and we work with different social service agencies, the Housing Authority. We work with our EPISO and Border Interfaith groups to go out into the community to help them understand the types of opportunities that we have as an organization to get them what we call a wraparound support service so that they can complete post-secondary success. We work primarily with the El Paso Community College, with the UTEP School of Nursing and with the Texas Tech School of Nursing. So we, they do the training, we help with a wraparound support for life skills. For instance, if tuition doesn't cover all the costs, we help with that variance, especially with daycare issues, we help with those types of support. But more than anything, what our organization is key at doing is that we have an innovative case management support system. And what that support system does is it helps our case managers understand...
Roman, I'm sorry. We lost Commissioner Ogier. If you could get, just pause one second while she rejoins. I apologize. We lost her just a couple minutes back. And what you're doing is so important. We want her to be able to hear. There she is. Can you hear us now, Commissioner Ogier?
I think she's, I don't see her responding.
Commissioner Ogier?
We're calling her back in. Just a second, please.
Thank you, Littis.
Commissioner Ogier?
Commissioner?
Can you hear us? You're muted right now?
You're muted, Commissioner.
We're going to try to call her via phone. We're just trying to obtain the phone number. One second.
This never happens, Mr. Ortiz. I wish.
I know. It always happens with technology.
Yeah, it always happens. I was in the Arms Committee this, when they sit there talking to one of the most sophisticated, you know, generals from missiles technology and he kept dropping off. I go, wait a minute. You're in charge of missiles and you can be connected to us? There's something wrong with this picture. It's a two different technologies, I guess.
Commissioner Ogier is getting some technical backup there where she's at. If you wouldn't pause just a moment, Judge, a little bit longer, please. Thank you.
Sure. Yeah, no problem. Yeah, no problem.
Miguel, will you all please mute anyone who's not muted?
We are back up.
Go ahead.
Judge, would you like to recess for 10 minutes or longer?
Yeah, just, let's just say 15, just to make sure, because then we come back early. So 15 minutes, which would be-
Oh, I think Commissioner Ogilvie is back.
Can you all hear me?
Oh, we can hear you now.
Oh, my goodness. I'm sorry. I don't know what happened. All of a sudden, I got a message that I had lost my mic and lost my audio, and I didn't have speakers connected. I don't know what happened.
And then we're also having problems with the public hearing this, Commissioner. So we're trying to work that detail out.
Okay.
No, we are, we are, we are, we are good. We are good now.
We don't have any audio.
Okay. Okay, we're ready to go back. And so do you remember, Commissioner Ogilvie, where Mr. Ortiz was at?
I heard the first sentence.
Okay. Okay, go ahead.
Sorry.
And start over, Mr. Ortiz. Perfect. Thank you.
It's okay. You know, I say this in my sleep sometimes, so. But what Project Arriba is, is that we're a workforce intermediary. And so we bridge the gap between what employers need with a skilled workforce and what the public needs in regards to quality training. And so we know that in El Paso County especially, the healthcare industry is one that's on the rise and that will continue to be on the rise. And what makes Project Arriba unique is that we work primarily with the El Paso Community College, the UTEP School of Nursing, and Texas Tech School of Nursing. And we help individuals increase their probability of finishing post-secondary success through our innovative case management and wraparound support service design. So what that means is that every individual that comes into Project Arriba is assigned to case manager. That case manager knows, is very intimate with their life, knows all their income, their expenses. We look at that every six months. We look at their grades. We give them a track and a good understanding as to where they need to be as far as to be able to finish their goal. We help them with things that, for instance, if financially does not cover all of tuition, we also help with tuition, areas like daycare assistance. But the case manager is there to make sure that that individual participant succeeds in being able to get through a college or university system. And then not only that helps them with doing that, but helps them with being able to find a job here in this region. And so our primary partner in this region is UMC. And so many of our graduates get a job placed with UMC as well as with all the other major hospitals in our region as well. So our case managers not only help them start school, continue through school, graduate, but get job placed. That's our main goal as an organization, is that we're not just a scholarship at all. We're not just a training provider at all. What we're meant to do is that we are an economic development engine that helps counties, the County of El Paso, to be able to increase the probability of folks passing and finishing college so that they can get into some really great career fields in the healthcare industry, primarily in nursing and other ancillary healthcare degrees. So in a nutshell, that's what Arriba does, but I can be more specific if you need me to.
So how is it that you find the participants? How do you identify them? Are they already in school? And so you just, you reach out to them to try to offer them that extra assistance, make sure that they don't drop out of school? Or are the participants folks who are not in school yet, and you help them get to that place where they want to go back to school? Like, where exactly do you find the participants?
Yeah, so we use, we partner with different social service agencies, the Housing Authority of El Paso, our partners with the PISO and Border Interfaith. We go out into the community and to be able to talk to folks about the opportunities that Project Arriba has for them and what types of jobs are in demand. The participants come with no college degree. They come, I mean, no college credits, some with college credits. Some may hear about us through other word of mouth. But it's really through an active word of mouth campaign that we do. One of the things that I would like to be able to kind of make sure that everyone knows is that we would love to work with, you know, we know that you have a new Economic Development Department, and we're working with them right now. But if there's ways that we can partner with them so that information can be accessed by the general public to know about the opportunities that Arriba has, we would want to work very closely with that.
So are some of the participants already in school when they joined the program?
Sure. El Paso's a college town. And so some folks are already in school. Some folks went to school 15 years ago. You know, some folks have already almost maxed out their credit hours because they took, you know, classes that weren't part of their degree program or really they weren't able to finish because of life circumstances. And that's, you know, one of the areas that Arriba does look at with regard to the population that we serve here in El Paso.
And do you have like an annual report? I mean, I'd be really interested in reading some of these specific stories, just to see kind of the trajectory that a person's path took them on as they went through the program. Do you have like an annual report that you can provide that shares some of these stories?
Yes, ma'am. So if you go to impactelpasso.com, and that is our annual reports that are posted annually there. So it's called impactelpasso.com. And all of our annual, our annual reports go there. So starting in probably May and June, we will have our 2020 annual report published on that as well. On our website, projectarriba.org, we have all of our financials that are audited as well.
Okay. And for 2020, were those participants specifically, did y'all track whether or not they were, they had been COVID impacted, the 2020 participants? Or is that something you didn't track?
No, we don't track whether or not the individual participant was affected by COVID. All we, obviously, we are an organization that's creating essential workers. And so school continued. It changed dramatically on how they went to school. But we still ended the year with a 90% retention rate, persistence rate, not retention, persistence rate, in a year of pandemic, which is very good.
Okay. And the reason I was asking that last question about COVID-impacted families is just to Commissioner Stout's point. I'm not sure, I mean, for the CARES funding, it has to have some kind of COVID mitigation aspect. And so that, so I'm not really sure if we could say that that's the case unless you were specifically tracking folks that had been COVID impacted perhaps. But as Commissioner Stout said, maybe that's, maybe it doesn't fall within the CARES funding necessarily, but certainly there could be other opportunities for funding in the future, other sources of funding.
Let me ask you a question a little different, Mr. Ortiz. Was your organization impacted by COVID challenges?
Well, yes. The impact that's felt across the nation and then felt here in El Paso with Project Arriba is we had originally thought there was going to be a lot of, an influx of, when people were losing their jobs, people going back to school immediately. And what we found, not only at Project Arriba, but the community college and other schools across the country, is that there wasn't a great influx of students that came back to school while losing their job. And that may have had to do with the fact that they did receive a higher unemployment benefit that allowed them to stay unemployed. So what we're anticipating is that for 2021 and 2022, we're going to see folks needing retraining at that point because those benefits are not as high and/or don't exist. So that's kind of the one area that did impact Project Arriba in 2020 was our goal for enrollments being at a much higher pace. We did not, we did not see that.
Okay. Commissioner Ogilvie, any further questions?
That's all my questions, Judge.
I just want to make a quick comment. You know, I agree with Commissioner Stout that, you know, we're going to need, that healthcare is going to be really important. But there's another collateral situation that I work very closely with the Nurses Association, a lot of the healthcare workers have reached out to me. And a lot of them, their big challenge is that they, they're getting away from that career because of the experience that they had. One, just being, exposing their families to COVID, afraid there's going to be another situation like that. Also, the lack of appreciation is what they've told me, that they felt very unappreciated, that the community really didn't understand what they were going through. Some of them had to leave town, not only because of more money, but because they could stay at a hotel and work somewhere else and not be going home to expose their family. So we're going to have, I think, I believe, as we're trying to grow the healthcare, we're also going to have a huge challenge of having the right number of healthcare workers in that industry. So working really close with that challenge and to see how true it is. I've been trying to get statistics. I've talked to a lot of nurses there at UMC. And I'll be talking to Niko Tejala, what's happening at Providence. But there seems to be just, you know, a lot of, you know, nurses not coming back because of what happened and looking for other types of careers. And so that would be really difficult for El Paso, whether we have another challenge or even just, as we saw and what Commissioner Stout said, that we have a lot of underlying conditions. We have that delay that I've been talking, you know, right now, we're at 87%, I believe, the capacity of hospitals because of delay in treatment. They decided they wouldn't go into treatment, so they're getting, they go in more ill and staying longer time in the hospital. And so this is a really important area of healthcare that we really need to look at. And I like what you're saying, Mr. Ortiz, because it is an economic development, as much as it is, you know, we could look at it from the healthcare aspect, but the economic development component of people shifting jobs. And we saw that happen, probably not to the extent it happened with the clothing workers, but we had that shift in careers, and El Paso wasn't prepared to help individuals prepare to other careers. So it's, it's easy to say, I don't want to work in healthcare anymore, but then when you shift to careers, there's got to be a transitional phase to help them. So anyway, just wanted to take just comments.
And to dovetail off what you're saying, you know, we heard time and time again from Jacob, for example, that, you know, the capacity issues were not in the, in the area of that we lacked bed capacity, it was staffing capacity, right? And, you know, and what they had to do is bring in a lot of traveling nurses, which cost a lot, a lot more money than hiring somebody locally. And so, you know, it helps fill that gap. So, I mean, this is a, you know, this is not a twofer, it's a threefer because it goes to one of our main goals, which was workforce development, right? That's within our strategic plan that we've talked about over the years, the healthcare aspect and the economic development aspect, you know. So, I mean, there's just so many great benefits.
Commissioner Leon, please.
Oh, thank you, Judge. Thank you very much. Great presentation. I've always been a tremendous supporter of Project Arriba. I myself was helped during, about 11 years ago, through somebody who had graduated from Project Arriba. I've got two questions, one question and a statement. How many of your graduates, and I don't know if you track this, actually stay in El Paso as compared to somebody taking advantage of the program and moving out?
So over 94% stay in El Paso.
94%?
Did you hear me?
Yes, 94%. Over 94%.
My other issue is, like I say, I'm a very big supporter of Project Arriba. My concern on a five-year contract, a contract with a nonprofit, I'm concerned that it will tie the hands of future courts into this five-year contract where things may change next year, two years, four years from now. That's the only negative I see in this. I like it. I like your plan. And as things move along, I'm certainly very positive insofar as reaching out to Project Arriba and helping. So hopefully, we can do that. But I just, that's the small concern I've got in time of future courts' hands in this.
Thank you, Commissioner.
And I would just say, I understand exactly what you're, what you're talking about, Commissioner Leon, because it's hard for us to do that. But if we give them, for example, $625,000 from CARES Act or from ARP, that's, from what I understand is what they're asking for is like an upfront payment, and then they would spread that out over five years. And so we wouldn't be coming back, I guess, during, you know, having to ask for future commissioners' court to come back and give them funding out of our general fund like we have been in the past.
I'm sure we'll figure something out that'll work.
Okay, Commissioners, any comments? Excellent. Mr. Ortiz, just a great organization. When Commissioner Ogilvie asked, different ways that happened, I've been involved in the graduation. And one young lady was getting food stamps, and someone there, three kids, a little bit of, I think, sort of domestic violence situation. And, you know, there at the food stamps, she said that she read some, one of the, you know, one of the bulletin board, next thing she knows, she's in. She now has over 60 nurses under her. And it was such a, what a great testimonial. But, you know, it's just amazing the different ways that they get into the program and then the life changes, as Commissioner Stout mentioned, you know, just a family, full family, and their kids, and their, you know, the generations after them that move into a really different direction where they were at. So once again, Mr. Ortiz, thank you very much. I really appreciate the presentation. Obviously, it always helps us to hear these things before strategic planning so that we can incorporate our thoughts and work in that direction. So thank you very much. You have a great day today, Mr. Ortiz.
Thank you all very much. Thank you.
Thank you. Go ahead, Miguel.
Item number five. Receive an update from Commissioner Carl Robinson regarding the Purchasing Board, the Rio Grande Council of Governments, West Texas Water Development Board, and Justice Leadership Council. I believe at the request of Commissioner Robinson, we'll be deleting this item today. We can have a motion, please.
So moved.
Second.
Commissioner Olguen.
Aye.
Commissioner Leon.
Aye.
Commissioner Stout.
Aye.
Commissioner Robinson.
Aye.
Judge Samaniego.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Judge, I had a question real quick. Do we need to, do we need to give, you need direction to our staff on that last item to look at where we could actually, how, how we could fund the request that the Project Arriba brought? I mean, we kind of just heard the presentation, but I was wondering if, if we needed to give direction or something like that so that we can...
I saw Betsy Nottiness of, I just took it for granted that, that she would look into. But yes, you're absolutely right, Commissioner Stout. Betsy, you wanna...
Caesar, do you want to read that item back in so that it's clear for the record?
Sure. Item number four, receive an update and a presentation from Project Arriba, a community-based nonprofit working to improve the quality of life for El Pasoans.
Judge, Commissioners, the way this item is worded, we cannot take any formal action today. I did add it to a running list I have for you all to discuss during strategic planning. The one item I would note is CARES funding would not be an eligible source for a five-year plan, but there may be funding available through the American Rescue Plan. That also would not fund a five-year plan, but it would be able to fund a plan for a few years. But we can, one of our presentations today is about the American Rescue Plan. We can go over some of the details or the parameters. However, during strategic planning, we can discuss that. And if the court would like to prioritize funding for that, I believe it would need to be general fund or grants and we would be able to work on that as a priority.
Yeah, I think you have consensus to, to move in that direction, Betsy. Thank you.
Thank you so much, sir.
Hey, go ahead, Caesar.
Item number six. Receive a presentation and accept a quarterly report from the El Paso County Housing Authority.
Mr. Miguel Hernandez, are you on the line?
Good morning, Judge.
Good morning. Welcome back.
Good morning, Commissioners.
Thank you.
Thank you for having us today here. Miguel Hernandez, Executive Director of El Paso County Housing Authority. Judge and Commissioners, today our report will mainly focus on a HUD program called Rental Assistance Demonstration, known as RAD for short. RAD is a program that was authorized by Congress, FY-12 of HUD Appropriations Act. And really what that does is that it allows public housing agencies to convert units from their original sources of HUD financing to a, a project-based Section Eight contract. Now, with us today is our authority's consultant, Nathan Bondar, who will shortly step in and expand on how this program will allow EPIA to secure private sources of capital financing, but also how it's going to change its financial position to increase affordable housing in the county's jurisdiction. And lastly, we will also have our, our board chairman, Russ Hubing, Hubing Gertesha, share a few words. Now, I just want to make sure I have access to the presentation here or will we have somebody help me transition the slides?
We will advance the slides on your direction.
Okay, great. If we can go to the next slide, please. Okay. Okay, yes. Now, before we dive into, to the whole RAD program, we would really like our audience to understand EPIA's business plan and its focus to help the population we serve achieve homeownership and how this plan increases services and resources, improving quality of life. EPIA has created two corporations where EPIA is the parent company. One corporation will utilize specific dollars to family self-sufficiency services that will help address unemployment, education, transportation, childcare, et cetera. The second corporation will utilize funds specifically towards purchasing a home, such as a down payment assistance, financing, or home realtor services. This model will help families get immediate housing, but then place them in a plan to transition out of government housing and into their own home. In the long term, EPIA is, is positively impacting the county's housing market to meet demands of the population's growth, while strengthening the county's budget responsible for providing resources, improving quality of life, such as libraries, public services, health and social welfare. It is, it is important, though, to understand that why EPIA decided to focus on a family self-sufficiency program first, rather than immediately start building new units. And one of the things that we noticed immediately off the start was that EPIA did a report and noticed that there was no shortage of affordable housing outside the city of El Paso in the county's jurisdiction. In the following chart, let me see, we can transition to that slide. Caesar or...
It's, it's transitioning.
There you go. Okay, thank you. Now, now this chart here will, will, you'll see it's a report by the Texas Department of Housing and Community Affairs indicating twenty-six tax credit properties in the county. And I'll break them down for you. It's, there's three in Anthony, three in Clint, two in Fabin's, one in Homestead South, two in Horizon, six in San Elisario, eight in Socorro, and one in, in Vinton. Now, in, in addition to this report, we pull our, our own housing reports. And it, it shows the number of units available in our public housing program and units in the private sector subsidized by our Section Eight voucher program. Now, our, our housing reports indicate that several of the families, and, and just reminding the, the, the audience here that, you know, we've been in existence for about forty, forty-some years. Our reports indicate that there has been some families under our care for twenty-five consecutive years and some for a little bit more. And this is where we see grandma, you know, was in, was in housing, then mom is living in housing, and now we have the third generation in housing. So we, we needed a program that would break that generational cycle and we didn't want to build new units and contribute to that, that particular problem. So EPIA's Family Self-Sufficiency Program was created and we needed partners at that time, we needed to grow it. But it's been very successful and it's been connecting our clients to opportunities that secure steady income and establishes and improves credit. On the following slide, Caesar, you can help me with that. In this slide, you'll see that in 2016 is when the EPIA board approved the creation of the Family Self-Sufficiency Program. And, and Judge Samaniego, I know you, that you will recall, at that time, you played a huge role during that period, established new leadership at EPIA before your role as county judge. At that time, we started the program at, in 2016. But then every year after that, you'll see that we grew our housing programs through the voucher. And that's by us applying and receiving funding that were specific to veterans in 2017 and then funding that we received specifically for persons with disabilities in 2018. The corporations that we mentioned earlier were created in 2019, which now brings us to today. Now, these past years have been spent preparing EPIA for this next phase, which is growing the affordable units in the county. Out of all the HUD repositioning programs that are available, EPIA board has approved to move forward with RAD. And now I, I will hand over the presentation to Mr. Bondar. Nathan, if you could first give your full name, professional background, and who you work for, please.
Sure. Good afternoon, everybody. So my name is Nathan Bondar. I'm with Lytech Development Group. We are an affordable housing consulting and development company. We are very active in the tax credit world, the low-income housing tax credit world. We've done projects all the way back into the eighties, all throughout the state of Texas and throughout the country. But most notably over the past, I would say, eight or nine years or so, we've taken a, I guess, a niche approach to the various repositioning programs that HUD offers, starting with the RAD program and many other following programs, which I'll discuss in a minute. And we're assisting housing authorities all throughout the country and at various stages of helping them with the repositioning and guiding them to, to get from start to finish. My personal background, I happen to be an attorney, worked at both large law firms in New York City. We have a robust team of, I guess, former HUD officials, former housing authority officials, and various people in the industry that, you know, help us take a holistic approach, specifically to helping housing authorities through these processes, which can get very complex, and ensure that they take the best approach forward. You know, so with, with, with that being said, we've been working very closely with Miguel and his team at the, at EPIA, the housing authority, to help them develop a way forward that we believe will, will work the best for the housing authority. Now, I guess I'll take a step back for a moment, just a little bit about these programs. You know, so I, I won't get into the nitty-gritty of all the specific details of all the programs that can keep you here for hours or days, and I don't think anybody wants that. But i- in short, what these repositioning programs are is that, so I would say about ten years ago or so, I mean, HUD's always constantly thought about this, is that HUD was faced with a dilemma. They have housing authorities that were built, some going back to the thirties and forties, in EPIA's case, into the seventies or eighties. And housing authorities, like any buildings, get old. Things start to break down, things need to be replaced. And HUD's problem was, is that while they're giving housing authorities money to continue to operate and for basic capital improvements, they do not have the ability to sustain the money given to housing authorities to be able to make much-needed repairs, especially those who are more expensive. But that's where HUD developed the RAD program and several programs that have come out of that over the past several years, in which basically the housing authority is switching platforms. So right now, housing authorities are under the Section Nine Public Housing Platform, where housing authorities are given a yearly allotment from HUD and, you know, which can fluctuate dramatically, which it has, to now a Section Eight more steady platform in which HUD enters into a contract with the housing authority to give a steady stream of income. Now, the advantage of that steady stream of income is that, you know, the way housing authorities are structured right now, the income would fluctuate from year to year. So besides for the fact, you know, the planning aspect of being able to make repairs, housing authorities are also hampered in that they don't know how much money they're gonna get from HUD. So HUD, by allowing housing authorities to enter into these programs, is allowing the housing authority to lock in for the next twenty years a steady stream of income from HUD that not only will allow them to go and approach private resources to be able to tap funding and tap the equity of their valuable real estate, but will also allow the housing authorities to, I guess, operate, you know, at a higher, at a higher level than, than they've been operating. So HUD has created various programs to achieve those ends. We were, you know, investigating a number of different paths forward. The path that we have settled on, this RAD/Section Eighteen blend is HUD's newest program. And it's kind of a combination of, you know, taking the conservative approach. You know, we want to be safe, we want to make sure that the residents have the utmost protection, while at the same time making sure that we can have the utmost income from HUD so that the housing authority can achieve those goals. So the housing authority has settled on this RAD/Section Eighteen blend, which we believe is the best combination for the housing authority going forward to convert that Section Eight platform, to be able to tap private equity that will benefit the housing authority. But more so, post-conversion, it also gives the housing authority a lot of freedoms that the housing authority doesn't have right now, operating as a public housing authority, that post-conversion, the housing authority will then have options to go out and tap additional funding, additional bank resources, potentially tax credits, to develop more affordable housing in the El Paso community. So that's, that's kind of, you know, what, what, what we're trying to achieve here. So if somebody can forward to the next slide.
Already on the next one?
Okay, yeah, sorry. So yes, the next slide, it basically, you know, so it kind of highlights what, what I just mentioned, you know, kind of the conversion from pre-RAD to post-RAD, where we're converting to a more stable program, where PHAs such as EPIA are now have the ability to borrow money and tap valuable resources. You know, the way the housing authority is set up right now, they are restricted from placing any debt on, on the property and this is now allowing them to do that. But most importantly, the reason behind all these programs is, is to increase the resources so that the housing authority can, A, make much-needed improvements to the units so that the residents can live better. But also importantly, it then opens up the world to the housing authority to be able to provide potentially more units and also potentially more services for the residents. So the housing authorities can, can continue to function in that aspect of, you know, promulgating affordable housing in the community. But this, these programs will now allow the housing authority to soar and continue to do the, the great work that they're doing. So if we go to the next slide, this just, you know, this is, you know, 2013 to 2018. It's just showing, you know, the different projects that have converted with RAD. Actually, as of, you know, now, it's actually gone even more. We are working with probably, I think, over forty housing authorities throughout the country. Several of them have converted. We do believe over the next couple of years, most housing authorities will have gone through this conversion process. And this is especially in a market such as El Paso. We believe that this is a excellent path forward for them to be able to continue their mission and provide affordable housing. Now, if we go to the next slide, you know, just briefly, and, you know, and that's the overall and, and part of the reason why the housing authority is going this route with repositioning is that the RAD program provides numerous tenant protections. You know, for example, if you have to do any work, a tenant is allowed to return to their unit. You know, there's all sorts of relocation requirements and, and tenant protections and coming back to the unit that HUD has in place through this RAD program. HUD has done a lot of investigation as to overall satisfaction. Tenants seem to be very pleased. You know, at the end of the day, the tenant is getting a fixed-up unit for the same rent that they're paying. And one of the big questions we get is how does this affect the tenants? The tran, the transformation through the repositioning, so as far as the tenants go, the tenants can go back to their unit, they're still gonna pay the same rent that they paid before. It's just that HUD will be providing more money to the housing authority than they are providing to them right now. And with that extra money, that's what gives the housing authority the ability to, you know, do all these exciting things. But from, from a tenant perspective, not only does nothing change, but I think it's much better than that because they're going to have the ability to have much improved units. You know, some of the, you know, examples has been over here, we've made the energy improvements. Talked about replacing the sewer lines, repairing floors, improving security. These are all items that, the way the housing authority is operating now and the budget they're getting from HUD, they wouldn't necessarily have the ability to do all these projects, definitely not at once and probably over several years, if even at that. But by participating in this program, the housing authority is gonna be able to free up a lot of capital to be able to do all these exciting projects. Now, if we go to the next slide, I think we covered most of this, but it's just besides for the immediate benefit of the housing authority being able to take care of, you know, the capital improvements that they, they need right now, there's also tremendous long-term benefit. So as I mentioned, we do work with many housing authorities in various states of operations and functionality. I tend to say, and, you know, I guess I'll call myself as the outsider, Miguel and his team have done an amazing job of operating the housing authority. It is in an excellent financial position. They've done everything they're supposed to and then some. And now by an organization such as EPIA going forward, we can not only take their financial position, all the good things that they've been doing, but we can strengthen it even more by having that ability to attack or utilize private capital, which can not only help our existing units, but will also help the housing authority look at future expansion, which is, you know, the intent of the housing authority. And it's something which we've done with many housing authorities throughout the country to be able to bolster affordable housing throughout the county. And one thing I'll, I just wanted to add, so I know I've mentioned the family self-sufficiency, but one thing which is important to note is as far as future development goes, of course, the housing authority is set up to assist the public housing residents and for those, you know, tenants who qualify to participate. But we've been doing a lot of exciting things throughout the state and throughout the country, building more affordable units. And we mentioned more affordable units that doesn't, you know, limit the housing authority from expanding their... that doesn't, you know, limit the housing authority from expanding their portfolio to only those units that, that would cater towards the public housing units and those that qualify for them. But we also have done several creative workforce mixed-income housing, which would potentially allow for housing for tenants who may not qualify for public housing, but would fit nicely in, say, an affordable project, you know, for example, say, I don't know, nurses or schoolteachers, you know, who may not qualify under the lowest of income, but, you know, maybe they could use a little bit of a boost and, and attract people to, to the economy. And this is something that, that's worked very well throughout the state and throughout the country, and it's something that we envision with EPTA going forward, that we're going to be utilizing these programs to assist the housing authority and assist the community grow. So that's, you know, pretty much the program in a nutshell. There are tremendous benefits. We believe, you know, it fits very nicely with, with the housing authority, and especially with the leadership of the housing authority through the support of the county. We only see positives here.
Thank you. And please hang on, we, we just have one more slide, so that in the event that we have questions or from the Commissioner's Court that we are able to answer. But on the next slide, I'll hand this presentation over to our Chairman, Russ Eubinger.
Thank you, Miguel, and good morning, Judge and County Commissioners. I just want to tell you how proud I am of the work that EPTA has done under the leadership of our Director, Mr. Hernandez. I'd also like to take this time to thank the entire EPTA Board for the dedication they have demonstrated to move EPTA in the direction that we're going. I specifically wanted to thank our Commissioner Crawford. She's our longest-serving EPTA Commissioner. Ms. Crawford has served in many positions on the EPTA Board, to include the Chairman and Vice Chairman positions. I'd also like to thank the EPTA staff for the passion they demonstrate while serving the community. You know, if I was going to summarize the past year in one word, I would use adaptability. And so I just want to thank the EPTA staff for their adaptability to continue to serve EPTA and our community during a very challenging year. And I believe that there are three main keys to our success at EPTA. And they are transparency, compliance, and stewardship. But mostly, I'd like to focus on stewardship. It's the responsible overseeing and protection of something considered worth caring for and preserving. And I really think that sums up what we do at EPTA. I also have been honored with the opportunity to work with the County Commissioners and the Judge on new programs which benefit the El Paso community. And I'd just like to take this time to say thank you to Commissioner's Court for the support and partnership that you have provided, especially over the past five years. You have truly demonstrated stewardship for EPTA, and I thank you very much. I'll turn it back over to Miguel.
Thank you, Chairman. Go ahead, Miguel.
Miguel, you're muted. Miguel, you're muted.
Thank you, Chairman. And at the end, we have one more slide, and that's just the question slide. So if there's any questions, Judge, Commissioners, you know, we're welcome to ask, so that we can answer.
Could you please repeat the, the consultant's name? I did not catch it. It broke a little bit when.
Yes, Nathan Bundar.
Okay. Nathan?
Nathan Bundar.
Bundar, okay. I just want to comment that, you know, if you look at, you know, my exposure that I had, very limited, very difficult to project. And I think what Nathan talked about today is being able to sort of look ahead was very difficult. It was more a, you're sort of working on a, on a year-by-year kind of premise, and and so it was very difficult to, to talk about growth and development and, you know, what the housing authority could do. So to, to me, that's really encouraging, that you begin to have an opportunity to, to make long-term projects, and then what is it that you could do for housing in, in the county. And, and I too, Chairman, I do also a lot of respect for Mr. Hernandez and what he's done. I've seen every, his commitment and what he's done within, throughout the years. And so we thank you, Miguel, for, for your passion and and what you're trying to accomplish for housing. So Commissioners, any, any comments, any questions? Excellent presentation, gives us a, a new insight that we sort of understood EPTA, but I think we're looking at, you know, a little different as to what EPTA represents in the future. So Commissioners, any, oh, yeah, I see Commissioner Stout, please.
Thanks, Judge. Sorry, I'm not going to turn on my camera here because I'm waiting in line to get my second vaccine, so.
Multitasking.
Yeah, thanks, thanks, thanks for the, the presentation. And I, I think housing is really significant, need in El Paso, including in, in the county, although the specific characteristics may vary between urban and rural areas. And I just wanted to know if you are planning on expanding access to housing, what, what, what kind of expansion are you planning to housing? Do you have any specifics that you can give us? Whether it's in the county, in the outside, in the unincorporated areas, or in, in, inside the city limits? And if you do, like, what, what, what would the timeline be on those?
Yes, and, and that's a really good question, Commissioner Stout, and thank you for that. One of, one of the things that we work on when creating our strategic plan, and we renew it and submit it to HUD on a regular basis, is, is we try to link the housing plans with the incorporated cities. So we'll, we meet with the mayors and city councilmen, because they know their specific community needs when it comes to housing. So when we meet with them, the first thing that, and a very common thing that's been as a feedback for us, is more housing for the elderly community. And it makes sense that a lot of the residents in the county has just grown roots to their community, and, and they're wanting to retire there, and they have their family that stays there. But they need resources, healthcare services, that help improve their quality of life. So out of all the, the, since we've gotten housing vouchers that addresses the homeless veteran situation and persons with disabilities, I think that our first project, as we're presenting to our board, is having housing specific to the elderly. Now, specifically location, we're looking at any, the population that is residing south of I-10, where Socorro to Torneo, that's mainly where we have the, the need to address housing for the elderly population. We're seeing a, in the long run, an increase in housing, maybe in the horizon and Hope City South area. The population there is younger, but the, the income level is also higher. So the focus really is south of I-10, Socorro to Torneo, and then some areas on the west side, where we see Vinton and Canutillo. And timeline, you asked a timeline. Right now, the application process is being submitted through our consultant and attorney, Nathan Bundar and his team. We also have another, we have two legal teams that we're working with that's helping us also with the process. We are hoping to close on this by the end of this year. But we are able to work on already financing plans and resources that Nathan and his organization will be, will be providing. So we're looking at, after this year, the next two years, we're, we should be in a position where we're going to be breaking ground and building new complexes. And then the opportunities of different financing is there, which, which is great. Nathan has looked at our housing portfolio and is waiting for us to give them the need so we can determine the number of units, the number of complexes, and then from there, we can determine the best financing, whether mixing local financing with maybe tax credits, as an example. But what we'll do on our end is continue to, to keep the Commissioner's Court informed through our quarterly reports.
Thank you, Miguel.
Okay, um, thanks for, thanks, thanks for that. It, it's good to hear that y'all have some plans to expand and, and, you know, that you all recognize that there, that there is a need out there. Y'all, y'all are going to be involved in, in this, this working group that has to do with, with housing that, that kind of came out of the, I can't remember the name of it. It's, it's going to be with like the city and the housing authority and some other folks. I think they were supposed to have a meeting today, but it got canceled. But, you know, I was, I was talking to Jerry Chon at the Housing Authority for the city, and, you know, he told me that they, that they, you know, they, they have an interest in, in doing some expansion themselves in the county. And that's something, I guess, that they need approval for, from, from, I guess, the Commissioners. And, and I just wanted to know, what are your thoughts on, on that? Is that something that you are supportive of? Is something that you, that you would not be supportive of? And, 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 you know, why or why not?
Yes, and thank, and thank you for asking that question, Commissioner Stout.
Sorry to interrupt, Miguel. Good morning, Judge and Commissioners. Erica Ross, Assistant County Attorney. If I understood correctly, Commissioner, correct me if I'm wrong. I think the question might have to do with something outside of the scope of, of the discussion, where to receive a presentation and accept the quarterly report of the County Housing Authority, unless it was in the presentation, Miguel, and I missed it. Correct me if I'm wrong.
No, no, it's, it's not in there. And we, and we were informed that it, it will be added to a, a future agenda.
Thank you, Erica.
Okay, all right. Well, I guess, I guess we'll talk later about that, then. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Stout. So have any other further questions on this presentation? Well, thank you. I thank all of you for, for being here. Thank you for your time. It's really important for us to understand housing, of course, is, is a huge challenge in the county. We're trying to create jobs, and it's hard to create jobs if you don't have the housing, and they, they all work together. And so we really enjoy this partnership. So Miguel, thank you for getting our guest to be here. You have an excellent board, and we thank you for that. You know, sharing, you know, what the success is of your program. So thank you very much. Everyone, have a, have a great evening. Thank you, Chairman.
You do the same. Thank you.
Go ahead, Caesar.
Could we please have a motion to accept the quarterly report, please?
Same move.
Commissioner Olgin?
Aye.
Commissioner Leon?
Aye.
Commissioner Stout?
Aye.
Commissioner Robinson?
Aye.
Judge Samaniego?
Aye.
Motion carries. Item number seven, receive an overview of the American Rescue Plan Act.
Miguel, could you please bring up the presentation? Thank you. Good morning, Judge, Commissioners, Betsy Keller, Chief Administrator. Today, we're providing an overview of the American Rescue Plan Act. Next slide, please, Miguel. This overview is going to be what is in the plan, what type of projects or programs may be funded with the county's allotment. We'll go over the guidance from GFOA. We'll go over some project examples from other, other communities. We'll also talk a little bit about policy options for the court to start thinking through and be prepared. And we'll also go over some of the next steps as well. We are not asking for any action today. We will close with what, what's going on. We'll go over what, what work we're doing right now. And then we will be discussing this further with the court during your strategic planning in the next couple of weeks. Next slide, please. This American Rescue Plan, as the courts aware, was signed into law March 11th, 2021. It's the third pandemic aid law that has been passed by the federal government. As you're aware, we did receive funding under the first package, which was the CARES funds. We did not receive any direct allocation through the second package, the Coronavirus Relief and Supplemental Appropriations Act, but we were able to draw down some funds through other sources. And then, of course, this third package, which is the American Rescue Plan. What, the guidance is still pending, but one, one thing that has been said about the American Rescue Plan from the federal government is that they're going to have more accountability, eligibility, and reporting requirements than previous aid packages. They specifically reference lessons learned from previous packages. Next slide, please. The, the plan also includes direct payments to individuals and families of $1,400 per person. This is what they consider fulfilling the promise of $2,000 per household or per person with the $600 payment in December being the down payment. Next slide, please. The plan, the American Rescue Plan, the 1.9 trillion, also includes $300 per week in federal unemployment benefits, being extended through September 6, 2021. What we need to be aware of is two things under this particular provision. First of all, this, this funding is to assist families during this impact of the, the pandemic, to help with the economic situation. It's also creating a situation, and I've heard this from several businesses, where individuals may be making as much as almost about $18 per hour on unemployment. And I've heard from some businesses that it's making it difficult for them to fill certain positions, more entry-level positions. It also extends the Pandemic Unemployment Assistance Program and allows emergency unemployment relief for government entities and nonprofit organizations. Next slide, please. The, the plan also establishes a national COVID-19 vaccination program and improve the distribution of vaccinations. Of the $20 billion, 7.5 billion is going to CDC to support local governments in the distribution of vaccines. We will be monitoring this to see how we could use that source or possibly receive an allocation to help UMC and ESD II with its operations, or to reimburse us for how we're helping. There's another 7.5 billion going to FEMA to set up more vaccination sites. And then 1 billion is going to the CDC for communication and efforts to strengthen vaccine confidence to improve vaccination rates. The next area where it's talking about testing, contact tracing, and mitigation, that is to support public health offices at the local level and for other resources for the pandemic response. Next slide, please. This Home Investment Partnership Program is $5 billion being funded to HUD for homeless prevention and supportive services. I'm not sure we will qualify for direct funding due to the population formula used, but we will be monitoring this. The LIHEAT program will provide energy assistance through September of 2022. The 21.6 billion being distributed to states, counties, and cities for emergency rental assistance. We will also be watching this very closely for how to receive funding. It's my understanding that counties of our size are eligible to receive direct funding from the Treasury, but we're waiting for the specific details to be coming out on that program. And then, of course, the Housing Choice Vouchers are for emergency housing vouchers. The $100 million for rural housing is rental assistance being ran through the USDA. Next slide, please. The Paycheck Protection Act, the 7.25 billion on this slide. This is another round of forgivable loans. The application deadline was originally March 31st, but I double-checked it's been extended to May 31st. And this is also being extended to larger 501(c)(3) organizations and veteran organizations that don't employ more than 500 employees per physical location. You may recall that originally it was not open to organizations of that size or of that nature. Next slide, please. Some additional assistance going directly to businesses are listed here. Specifically, I wanted to talk a little bit about the emergency, the Economic Injury Disaster Loan Program. This is double the amount that's in the Paycheck Protection Program. And I think it's worth noting, this, this provides loans up to $500,000 for small businesses. They'll have up to a 30-year period to pay these loans back at a low interest rate. Applications will be accepted through December. Um, applications will be accepted through December 31st of this year, and this is being ran through the Federal Small Business Administration. Also, I've been watching closely on this Community Navigator Pilot Program. Um, this is going to be where they partner with small, I'm sorry, with local entities to be a outreach arm for the Small Business Administration to make sure that, um, businesses in underserved areas are aware of these programs being available. It's something that, uh, I've already asked, uh, Michael in Economic Development to watch for. The guidelines are supposed to be out or or the, um, the call for, uh, letters of interest are supposed to be out by, um, April 30th. But this might be something where either our chambers of commerce who have done this type of program for us or others might be interested and we could partner to make sure we're getting this information out to all businesses in our community. Next slide, please. The funding that's going to EDA and FEMA, um, specifically the funding going to FEMA on the Disaster Relief Fund. Again, this is $50 billion. We are researching to see what we can recoup through this program. This would also be funding to assist with things like vaccinations, um, and other other resources, medical care. It may be beneficial to UMC, um, and again, our partnership with ESD or others for vaccination deployment and or medical care. I've also shared this information with Jacob from UMC, who's, I'm sure, probably already ahead of it, but making sure that all of our partners are are aware. Next slide, please. Um, there's funding for public transportation, so transit agency funding of 30 billion. This is will provide funding through fiscal year 2024. Normally, there's a a percentage of the share that that recipients must pay, but this will fund it at 100%. Um, there's funding for Amtrak. There's also funding for, um, airport improvement programs. Most of the airport improvement program funding that I've read about so far is, um, making airports safer for travel, um, and and providing some subsidies for even even concessions inside airports. Next slide, please. Um, there's funding for ensuring food security. This SNAP funding extends the recently enacted 15% benefit increase through September 30th, 2021, which, of course, is helping families put more foods that they enjoy on the table. Um, it also includes an extra 1.1 billion for state SNAP administration over a three-year period. And in a percentage of states, um, that funding is going down to counties for administration because they allocate or they assign SNAP administration to the county level. Um, I know that's not the case necessarily, um, here, but, uh, just to point out that there are several counties who do SNAP administration. There's also an allocation for, um, additional funding for WIC and then, um, extending the pandemic EBT program for low-income children who've lost access to mills at schools during the pandemic. Next slide, please. Um, there is funding to safely reopen schools, and I don't I don't actually note it on here, but I wanted to mention, um, because we we did share funding with the schools from our CARES funds for their technology needs. The schools will be getting direct funding this through this, um, allocation, from the largest being EPISD, who will be receiving over $209 million directly, to Anthony, um, who will be getting just over $2 million directly. So total, our school districts in in El Paso County are getting, um, just over half a billion dollars in funding. Next slide, please. Um, the Childcare Development Block Grant includes $24 billion to go to to states to make, um, subgrants to childcare providers. The Child Independent Tax Care Credit, um, will be expanded and the, uh, maximum rate will be increased, helping individuals, um, on their who have childcare expenses, um, claim those on their tax returns and actually have a refundable portion. Um, this also expands the previously the FCCRA, which was the, um, Emergency Paid Leave for employees who are suffering from the pandemic related to COVID-19. And then there's a TANF Emergency Assistance Fund also established. Next slide, please. Um, our Area Agency on Aging should be receiving funding for, um, senior nutrition programs, which may also impact the county, home and community-based support, assistance for grandparents caring for grandchildren, among other programs. Um, there's also a program for Elder Justice Act programs, which we are monitoring to see how this may be beneficial to our community. Next slide, please. The plan also includes some really other other important aid, including funding for, um, SAMSHA for substance abuse prevention, mental health programs specifically for healthcare professionals and first responders. Judge, you mentioned earlier how many healthcare professionals are, um, taking a step back. These types of programs will hopefully help address some of those those concerns and reengage that workforce. There's, uh, funding for aid to farmers. Of course, in El Paso County, we have a large agricultural, um, community, but there's there's aid for farmers, ranchers, and distributors. And then, um, the next slide, please. There's also funding for funeral assistance. Previously, the county had used some CARES funds, almost $1 million in our CARES funds, and we were providing up to $2,500 in funeral assistance. The federal government through FEMA will now be reimbursing people up to $9,000 per funeral and be in recognition of the fact that some families were impacted by multiple losses due to COVID-19, that each application could get a maximum of 35,500 for the loss of multiple family members. And this will be backdated to expenses incurred after January 20th, 2020. Next slide, please. Um, I wanna I wanna stop there for just a second. I wanna I wanted to go over all of those other programs that are funded through American Rescue Plan so that we are aware as the court begins thinking about what to do with the direct allocation the county will receive. Those are those are all direct programs that the federal government has identified through the American Rescue Plan. Um, there there are still guidelines coming out. The programs are still being developed. We're monitoring those very closely to see how the county can also benefit its residents and its entire community. But separately from that, there was the distribution going directly to states and local governments. Of the 1.9 trillion, 350 billion, about about 20% of the funding is coming directly to states and local governments. This funding has specific uses it can be allowed, um, to be spent towards. That includes, um, addressing the economic impacts and responding to the COVID-19 pandemic, um, water and sewer infrastructure, um, loss of revenue programs that things that we would have had to cut or or, um, not not provide due to a loss in revenue, broadband infrastructure, and then also a premium pay plan for essential workers or essential work during the pandemic. What's really important to note is that the Corona, uh, these relief funds, the coronavirus relief in funds, must be spent no later than December 31st, 2024. Next slide, please. So as I mentioned, a portion of it is going to states and some of it is going directly to cities and counties. Um, Texas is receiving 16.7 billion dollars. We don't know exactly what programs the state is going to be, um, deploying with that 16.7 billion, but that will be another avenue that we will want to monitor closely to see if there's the ability to draw down funds specifically to address our, um, community needs. Next slide, please. Separately from what's going to the state, the county is going to receive directly 162.7 million. This will be given to the county in two separate payments. The first payment we should be receiving within the next month, which is will be half, just over $81 million. And then the second payment we're supposed to receive within the year, a year later. Um, but this is directly coming to the federal government, from the federal government to the to the county. And again, again, excuse me, the the allowable uses are outlined here on the screen and, as I mentioned earlier. Next slide. The CRF funding that's going to municipalities, um, will be 65.1 billion of the 1.9 trillion. I have broke down on the slide what each city in our county is receiving directly. So you'll see that ranges from 159.2 million to the city of El Paso, down to 1.17 million for the city of Anthony. I do want to note that most, all of these small municipalities received a direct allocation from the county through our CARES fund allocation. They have not, a- as you may recall, we gave them a portion of that funding directly upfront, and then once that funding was completely spent, they were to, um, request additional funding through a reimbursement process. Um, to date, these small municipalities have not utilized all of that initial CARES funding that we've allocated. We are working with them to see with this new funding coming in, whether they're going to be able to use that CARES funding or not. And if not, we're going to be requesting to return that CARES funding so that the court can reallocate it for another purpose. Um, we do hope that we'll be able to partner with them on various programs and services so that we can expend all of this funding to their, um, to their benefit. Next slide, please. This is just an overall graph of how they're breaking down the 1.9 trillion dollars of where it's going. Next slide, please. The Government Finance Officers Association has also released some guiding principles for cities and counties to consider when using this funding. They note that it's very important that we realize that this is one-time funding and it is not going to be ongoing. One of the, um, I guess, warnings or or guides that they share is if if you the purpose of this funding, as we all know, is to help mitigate the economic impacts and respond to the coronavirus pandemic. If we use this in a manner that creates ongoing expenses, at the end of the time that the funding is allowed to be used, you will be creating a future burden, um, to your community. So they they really recommend you look at one-time funding opportunities, um, infrastructure, um, equipment, um, technology that will be a one-time expense and not create as much ongoing expenses. It is also, um, a a grant program, so we will need to monitor, um, what is added through the grant and that it will have a an end date or a, um, temporary nature. If there's if there's contractors that are brought on or consultants that are brought on, that those contracts don't extend beyond the time of when the funding is allowed to be used, unless the court is willing to absorb those costs or take them on, um, as a tax impact beyond the date that the the funding can be used. Another thing that they recommend is to scan and partner. Look at who is doing what. Look at what other programs are being funded directly by the federal government or your state government. Um, try not to replicate programs. Try to partner and fill gaps and looking for your best mechanism to deliver. Um, this court is often very conscientious about what can we partner and and contract out for someone else to provide versus providing it ourselves in-house. And then also, um, the final part of the guidelines are about time and consideration, being realistic about what you can do within the three-year period, um, finding mechanisms on how you can do it within that timeframe, and being considerate that there may be other issues that come up as a result of the pandemic that we're not aware of today. Next slide, please. These are some examples I pulled, um, through the National Association of Counties for projects that have been being done, um, through CARES funds in other communities. And just to just to mention a few, um, there's there's a wealth of information through NACO on other types of programs. I just pulled a few to mention, um, economic recovery programs, workforce training, um, grants to assist county rec- residents in hard-hit industries, um, nonprofit support, homeowner stimulus assistance, um, worker job job retraining programs, providing a stipend to individuals while they acquire new skills to help them rejoin the workforce. Next slide, please. Um, Fort Bend County here in Texas did a small business emergency assistance grant program similar to what we've done here in El Paso. Um, Johnson County did a, um, school-age remote learning and childcare program, um, to help workers get back to work and not have, um, childcare concerns. They also, um, did training and workforce support to employees in sectors most negatively impacted by COVID-19. And they expanded that to not just tourism, but, um, a lot of individuals weren't aware that there was a a sector of healthcare. Um, Judge, you talk about it a lot, about the delayed, um, access to healthcare, um, but that that workforce was also impacted due to the downturn in demand, IT, manufacturing, transportation, et cetera. Next slide, please. Um, these are just some examples we've started talking about here at El Paso County that I've heard from the court. I provided some of these examples just to start, um, to help the brainstorming with departments, um, what they have seen as far as their service to their constituents or our constituents in their areas. One thing we've heard is that more annexes to serve the community near their neighborhoods with the ability for private meeting space, um, that are transitional for workers, jurors, others needing service, kiosk, digital marquees to be able to communicate with the public about where we're having vaccine sites, where they can go get tested, what are the current orders, um, how can they access services. Um, expanding broadband, that's been a very high priority, I've heard from the court. Um, waiting systems, I don't know if you all recall, but we had to we had to implement a labor-intensive waiting system at the tax office, um, where we could have used technology had we had a a system to do this, where individuals would be notified when to come into the building via their telephone. Virtual visitation system for the detention facilities, expanding that system, uh, making it more robust, uh, water and wastewater systems. Um, we are waiting to hear, I I did see some, um, dialogue through, again, through NACO about whether or not the federal government would also include stormwater in the water wastewater system, um, out allowance. Workforce training programs, again, some of these we've mentioned, I won't go over every single one of them, um, but just looking at different ideas that the court may want to consider. Next slide, please. So this is a transformational, once-in-a-lifetime investment opportunity. You've heard me say that the last time the county received this big of an allocation of funding was due to a bond we issued in 2012, um, and it wasn't even this this amount. In 2012, we issued a bond of $110 million. We're we're slated to receive $162 million, and we have basically three years to expend those funds. In speaking with, um, purchasing and auditors, one of the things that makes a difference in how timely we can we can roll this funding and these projects out is the fact that we are under an emergency order. The longer we're under that emergency order, the more streamlined the processes can be and, um, the more efficiently we can roll out these projects. But I do believe that that what our community will receive is a result of our actions. Um, our our team has been focusing on what will we be able to deliver and and impact our community as a result of the actions from this funding. Um, some of the areas the court will be considering, I'm sure, are reserving a portion for vaccine funding in case we're not able to pu- pull down funding from another source, um, reserving a portion to offset revenue loss to help maintain level services and avoid tax burden to property owners for the next three years. Um, you may recall, early in the pandemic, we cut over $13 million worth of expenses from our budget. And in doing so, we cut services that we were going to be deploying or we were already deploying. So, um, replenishing that funding, um, and and we, auditors are in the midst of a a revenue analysis, but preliminary numbers show that our revenue decreases were approximately 14 million. million dollars in this fiscal year. So we're, we're going through to see which of those are pandemic-related that could be offset with this funding if the court was interested in doing so. We will look to, you, you could look to partner with others and put more of the funding towards a major project such as county-wide broadband, or you could do some mix of doing a massive project, county-wide project like broadband, and a portion to other programs or projects to assist businesses and individuals, which departments are working on compiling ideas in addition to the ideas the court has. Or you could use the majority to assist businesses and individuals and avoid a major project if, if you wanted to focus more on these programs directly to businesses and individuals through other mechanisms. Next slide, please. So right now, we are gathering initial information from departments. We've met with the departments and the elected, our, our departments as well as appointed and elected departments. We're asking them to submit their ideas on ways to, to respond to the pandemic and mitigate the impacts of the pandemic to our, to our community. We'll be asking the court to consider how you would like to see this funding allocated. We expect to be receiving the funding, as I mentioned, in about four weeks. And then we are also awaiting, a very important component is the guidelines to be issued by the U.S. Treasury as far as how the funds can be used. Of course, timeliness is going to reduce, result in a potential cost savings. As I mentioned in, in this presentation, our school districts are going to receive over half, over half a billion dollars. The, the other municipalities are going to be receiving several hundreds of millions of dollars. And we are not the only community, every community in America is receiving this funding. There will be a, a high demand for contractors, for programs like broadband, for water systems, and for other types of programs to respond to the pandemic and help the community. So resources are going to be cr- critical. Having our own internal resources is going to be very critical because this work will all be time-sensitive and above and beyond their normal service delivery. And our support from internal services during this time to help departments be able to deliver on these projects and programs will be very important. Next slide, please. These are just some resources I used in preparing this presentation and collecting information if anyone is interested in going to learn more. I've also been going to each of the federal, I haven't listed them here yet, but I've been going to each of the federal websites as well, Small Business Administration, FEMA, the National Highway and Transportation website as well to learn more about each of the other programs. Next slide, please. I believe that's the end of the presentation, Miguel, if you can pull it down for me. And I, I apologize for taking so long, but I just wanted to give this overview so that we're aware of what type of funding there will be, what kind of programs we can be thinking for, the court can be thinking towards for our community, to be able to give staff some direction as we move forward. And again, no action today. Sorry, go ahead, sir.
No, I'm just gonna say it's exceptional, it sort of gives us, gives us such a, a wide view, and I think it's very important that we go through lessons learned from the first money we received and sort of look at what are the, some of the things that we could have done better, and I know we've, you and I have discussed that a lot. And I, I like some of the areas especially, I've always felt that agriculture would be such a dynamic part of the county, but it really had never gotten that kind of traction or the opportunities that we're having, even, even now, you know, trying to reach out, thanks to Commissioner Olgin and others for the, even the vaccine and having a relationship with them. But there's so much that we could do for them and, and create that agricultural business to, to the next level. So just a lot of great things, I think, once again, and I keep talking about strategic planning, but it's, these are sort of ways to, to move to strategic planning, but with a wider understanding of some of the potential. It's sort of exciting and scary, you know, in a sense, because it's just got so many moving parts, but what great opportunities. I mean, it really is gonna make us extremely accountable because this could be a pivotal move for county commissioners, myself, that says, you know, we've been wanting a lot of things that we just haven't wanted to burden our, you know, our taxpayers, and so we were sort of reluctant in some areas. And so I think it's, it's a huge pivotal opportunity for, for Commissioners Court at this point in time, so. Commissioner Leon, please.
Yes, Judge, thank you. As you said, Judge, we go back to what we just received over the last several months as lessons learned, but Betsy, this is, in looking at this, it is overwhelming. And I, I don't know if it's a recommendation that I have, or I noticed some sort of funding there for a manager to assist you. You've got to have some sort of help with some expertise to help you, help the court make decisions that aren't going to bite us later on as we move forward. So I, I really recommend that we look at the possibility of hiring a temporary assistant that has expertise in this area to, to help us, to make sure that our funding is used in the more critical areas.
Yeah, this is an initiative that, like you said, it's just overwhelming, it's an initiative that pulls so many things together. I mean, you have to be looking at from the auditing, from the, you know, accounting, from public works to, I mean, every, it's sort of pulling everyone together, and I, I know you're capable of doing it, Betsy, somehow you'll figure it out, but I too am very, very encouraged, would like to encourage you to look at it from almost a departmental kind of, department head kind of situation that allows us to feel that you're going to be able to continue all the other things that, that you have to do, and then take this, the big piece of the pie of, of your workload. So I, I agree with Commissioner Leon.
Thank you both. We are also looking into, one of the things is we're doing a call for departments. We want to be really realistic. As, as I mentioned to the court previously, when the court went out in 2012 before, I think before all of us were here, when the court went out in 2012 and it pulled down this funding, it did not give itself any resources that I'm aware of. I don't recall any resources being, I was here in the HR sense, and I know we did not allocate positions specifically for delivering on that funding, and, and it has made it extremely challenging. So one of the things we are asking, as we ask departments for these project ideas, we're asking for timelines, and we're asking for what resources would we need, whether it's contractors, whether it's internal temporary staffing, what, what, what resources do we need to deliver on this?
Absolutely.
We'll be mindful of that, yes, sir. Thank you.
Commissioner Olgin, please.
Thank you for that presentation, Betsy, and I just wanted to reiterate something that you mentioned that I think is really, really, really important that we all have to keep just in the front of our minds, is just the timeline that we're going to be in. Not only is this a tremendous opportunity with a tremendous amount of funding, but it also comes with very, very strict deadlines. I mean, this is funding that has to be expended in three years. And so I, I know that we, we do have some of these emergency purchasing procedures that, that we might be able to take advantage of, but I think, just so that we all understand, this is going to require a tremendous amount of cooperation as we try to get these contracts, you know, purchasing, the county attorney's office, our auditors, I mean, we're all going to have to try to move as quickly as we possibly can to make sure that we're approving these contracts and getting these projects started as quickly as possible so that we can make sure that we meet all of the deadlines. So I just, I wanted to reiterate that, I know Betsy spent a little bit of time talking about that, but to me, that's one of the most important things that we have to keep at the forefront of our discussions while, while we're, while we're doing all of this.
Yeah, that's absolutely very correct because we don't want to be dealing with any collateral issues because we fell behind and then distracting us from what we need to be doing, so I totally agree, Commissioner.
Judge, Commissioners, if I can make one other comment, it's, it, it seems irrelevant in some ways, but it is something I think we need to be conscientious of also. We are coming off of a year in, in this pandemic mode on our workforce as well, and, and we all know about the impacts, or we all know, have some idea about the mental health impacts of the pandemic, and then we're about to go into three years of probably some of the most demanding and rewarding work from these same individuals. And so, you know, as we go forward, and something we really do appreciate about the court is the valuing our, our employees as they go through this, and being mindful of mental health resources and things that we can do to keep them going and keep them engaged. And one of the things you're doing right now is the Employee Engagement Survey. Those types of measures will be really important as we go forward, and just, just knowing that our workforce is going to be what helps us deliver on these programs.
Well, thank you, thank you for that. I think there's a tendency that we look so much outside of ourselves, you know, outside of our family, and then we take a little bit for granted that, that, you know, they're the individuals that are going to make a lot of things happen, and they need to be focused, they need to be motivated. And I think, you know, I believe we do a great job on that, but I think we need to be more, more tangible things other than just, you know, we're always appreciating them, we care a lot about them, but we need to look at, especially that mental health component, it's going to happen, they're, they're part of our community, and we've said in our community, one of the biggest challenges is sort of like, you know, a backlash of everything that's happened. People don't realize how their level of mental health until things begin to end and people begin to see. I've, I've had people who have come out of quarantine that they felt they were completely excited, and about two weeks later, they had a backlash of, of depression and feelings of, you know, confusion that, that all build up during the quarantine, and so I'm very conscientious about that in our community, but I, I thank you for making, we have such great and strong employees that sometimes we feel that they're just going to be different from the rest of our community, and, and they are going to be needing a lot of attention. And then, and as I said all the time, I mean, we are a great role model. I mean, people look at us to see what we do so that they could do the same things out there in the community. Organizations keep an eye out, and I think we've taken that role of, you know, of being able to show how we do things, how we handle our employees, and that allows us, as I've said always, when Commissioners and myself speak in public, I mean, we better know that we're doing exactly what we're asking others to do. And so thank you for that, that's a very important component, Betsy.
Thank you, sir.
Yes, sir, Commissioner Robinson.
Let, let me remind you and the court and all those listening that we have a large segment of, of our county, individuals and families that do not have running water, that do not have sewage. That is a critical, I mean, you and I, we, we enjoy that every day, we don't have to worry, that's something we don't have to worry about, but when you, when you say that you have individuals and families that don't have running water, they, they can't take a shower at night, they don't have sewage, they, they gotta go to an outhouse, whether they're in the restroom inside there, so we, we need to take care of those things. We, we, we talk about those things, that we, we can provide for our constituents, but we, we go beyond the talking and people, how can we get done as soon as possible? So this, this funding that we've been getting is a great opportunity to take, take that step forward where we have promised these individuals and families for years that we're going, we're going to provide water for you, we're going to provide sewage, those things...
Fighting for us and are still struggling for the basic needs out there, so I know that's going to be a, a huge component for us as well.
And we, Judge, Commissioners, we have almost a hundred million dollars' worth of water and wastewater projects. As I, as I was mentioning, that we're going out and we're asking departments for the types of projects that would be responsive and qualify under the funding. Of course, this is before the guidelines, the guidance is coming out, but based on just the general categories, I will tell you, overall, we already have approximately, I believe, about four hundred million dollars' worth of ideas for projects, and that does not include the replacement of revenue loss or the vaccine support programs. So we definitely have more ideas and programs and projects than we have funding. So the court will, will be having to help us identify and prioritize those types of programs as we move forward.
Well, we, we gotta consider as far as what, what is the priority as far as humanity is concerned. Yeah, there are a lot of things that I want, and you say, well, we would like to have this, like, but saying is that if, if, if you and I had to wake up each day and say we let go to the outhouse, or we don't have running water, et cetera, that would be very devastating for, for all of us. So I, I would say, let's take, look at what, what is our priorities and go in that direction.
And I think those types of projects work perfectly for this type of funding, Judge, because those can be completed in that very specific window of time that we have. So the, those results are very, very tangible. So I agree completely with Commissioner Robinson that that should definitely be a priority, the water and wastewater projects. But again, we're going to have to all move very, very quickly to make sure that those bids are received and processed and the contracts are finalized so that we can start moving on those projects and, and complete them in time.
And, and I know, Betsy, you and I have discussed it and you brought it up today, but there won't be a more important time for collaboration with other entities than, than this time? Because if we're duplicating and others are doing things that are similar and we're not adding synergism, I mean, if you look at the money that came in as a community, oh my goodness, I mean, and if everybody sort of spritz out in different ways and we're not sitting at the table saying, okay, how, you know, this is what we'd like, how can you help, or this is what you're doing that aligns with what we're doing, we're going to miss an, an amazing opportunity. And I think we've worked really hard to be in a situation where we do have the collaboration. I mean, I'm talking about even with the immigration agents and there's some of their expectations that they have as, as a county role. I mean, I'm looking at the city and what they're trying to accomplish, the superintendents, and so I think it's a, it's an opportunity for, and, and thank you, Betsy, for the kind of leadership because you have a tremendous amount of respect by all the leaders from, you know, Tracy Yellen to all our, all our partners, but I, I think we do need to sit at a table where we're looking at how do we, how do we help each other in some of these areas? Because some, some of them, we missed the mark money-wise, but with their support, we might hit a hundred percent on some of the projects that we wouldn't be able to reach. So anyway, I just want to reinforce that, one, that we need to do that, but two, that I think we are in a good place as the county has taken that, that role of, you know, being a great partner, but now we need to look at it on a more tangible way of, of addressing some of these initiatives.
Yes, sir. Okay, there's...
Judge, this is, this is Commissioner, can y'all hear me? Sorry, I was driving back from getting my, my shot and I pulled over so I could, so I could try to, try to, to, to speak real quick.
Thank you.
I, I just want to thank Betsy for the, for the presentation, that it helps, it helps, helped me really to, to put into perspective kind of what we're getting and what, what some of the other sources of funding that are coming down are so that we can exactly, you know, do, do what you're talking about, Judge, and not, not duplicate, duplicate things, and it's going to be very important for us to also be in constant contact with the city of El Paso as well as the other, the other communities that are receiving funding so that we're not duplicating there. And, you know, I think, I think we're, I think we're all in, in, in line with, with what we're thinking and, and making sure that this money is, is used in the most impactful way for, for the vulnerable population within the county, right? So, I mean, I hear the, and, and, and agree with a lot of what's been said. You know, I, I think that we really need to concentrate on, you know, providing, providing funds to folks that are having difficult times, you know, whether it's cash assistance, you know, help with, with attaining SNAP assistance, help with getting jobs, workforce... help with getting jobs, workforce, workforce development, and education. Housing, I think, is, you know, is really, really a big one, you know. People can't people can't be successful if they don't have those things, right? And and they're also interconnected, you know, housing, healthcare, education, jobs, and and all of those things. And so I'm glad that we're that we're on kind of on the same page there. And we have a, you know, a really unprecedented opportunity to do some great things for the community. And, you know, I'm looking forward to the strategic planning. I'm glad that we're looking at this in a strategic manner. You know, I I hope that we can that we can come up with with a very solid plan. Where we're not we're not doing things ad hoc and, you know, saying, okay, you know, something's popping up here and let's plug that hole. Something's popping up here. I mean, I think it needs to be very, very planned out. So I'm glad that we're starting it with this with this conversation. But it's daunting, you know, it's a very daunting task, I think. But it's but it's exciting that we have the opportunity to to do this for our community. And definitely agree with Commissioner O'Gin. We cannot leave one cent on the table. We have to make sure that everything is spent in a timely fashion.
Thank you, Commissioner. Okay, well, Betsy, back to you.
Thank you, Judge Commissioners. We look forward to discussing this with you further in the coming weeks. And with that, we'll wrap this item up and we're ready to go to the next item, Caesar.
Thank you, Betsy. Go ahead, Caesar.
Item number eight, receive a presentation and updates on the county's 2020-2024 strategic plan.
Thank you. Dr. Madrigal, we have you on board, right?
Yes, Judge Commissioners, it's my pleasure to introduce Dr. Lizelli Madrigal from County Administration to give the latest update on the current strategic plan.
Welcome, Dr. Madrigal.
Good morning, Judge and Commissioners. Dr. Lizelli Madrigal with County Administration. Today, I'm reporting on the second quarter progress and status of the strategic plan for this fiscal year. Next slide, please. The strategic plan in court adopted in 2020 targets nine key areas. Lead justice reform, transform economic development, increase tourism, upgrade infrastructure, promoting collaboration and engagement, advance community support, value El Paso County family, strengthen financial health, and optimize internal processes. Next slide, please. To tackle the nine goals of the strategic plan, 75 objectives and 189 activities were identified and implemented by county leadership and staff. The strategic plan includes three levels. The highest level is a goal level, which are the nine areas of focus the court identified and the outcomes the court intends to achieve. The next level are the objectives, which are the actions that help achieve the goals. The last layer are the milestone activities, which are specific activities that are carried out to accomplish the outcomes of the strategic plan. It's important to note that the status of milestone activities for each objective is aggregated upward to provide the overall progress of that goal. The overall progress allows the court and the public to see the progress the county is making towards achieving the plan. This presentation aims to show you the overall progress made towards advancement of the court's mission of delivering sound and exceptional public service to the people of El Paso County through judicious, efficient, and responsive government and to conscientious development of ideas that produce compassionate solutions to our community's obligations, challenges, and ever-changing demands. Next slide, please. Next, I'll report on the progress and status made to move forward each of the goals of the strategic plan. The status is a qualitative indicator that helps clearly and easily communicate how the milestone activities that support the objectives and goals of the strategic plan are advancing and performing. The progress represents a percentage of completion towards the achievement of the objectives and goals. In fiscal year 2020, second quarter, the progress made towards achieving the goals of the strategic plan was approximately 36%. A year later, and in light of the pandemic, progress towards achieving the goals of the strategic plan is about at 65%, almost a twofold increase from last year. As illustrated in the doughnut chart, in the second quarter of the fiscal year, the overall progress is as follows. In blue are milestones that have been completed, which stands at 46%. In green are milestones that are on track, and their progress is 36%. There has been some disruption to the plan, specifically 7% of milestones experienced some level of disruption, as denoted in yellow. And in second, and 2% of it will experience a major disruption, I'm sorry, as illustrated in red. Further, about 9% of milestones were discontinued and are illustrated in blacks, in black. Next slide, please. This slide provides a snapshot of the progress made for each goal. The strategic plan is in its second year of implementation. And as noted previously, 65% of the plan has been achieved in the first six quarters of the plan. That is, in 30% of the plan's time lapse. In the next few slides, I will give you further, I'll further elaborate and provide highlights on the progress and status of each goal. Next slide, please. We begin with justice reform, goal one. Six objectives and 26 milestone activities were identified and implemented. As illustrated in the graph, the progress towards achieving goal one is at 90%. In terms of the status of the goal, 81% of activities have been completed and 19% are on track. Next slide, please. This slide provides more details. Three of the objectives have been completed, objective one, objective five, and objective six. An example of milestone activity completed under objective one included presentation to the court on the findings of the HOK study, which was presented on August 20, 2020. Under objective five, use of technology to increase efficiency with pretrial assessment and monitoring. As an example, was a completed milestone. The implementation of automatic rebel calls. This program was fully operational in July 1, 2019. Further, in July 13, 2020, the National Association of Counties, NACO, granted El Paso County a 2020 Achievement Award for its pretrial justice modernization programs. This completing objective six. Objectives or milestone activities are on track include objective two, reduce recidivism, objective three, and only incarcerate those that are high-risk to public safety, and objective four, remodel downtown jail and repurpose to match improved justice systems. Milestones related to these objectives are on track. Milestones under objective three develop adequate, efficient, effective case and file management systems and continued development of a trial advocacy training. The Public Defender's Office has recruited its leadership team, including creating a director of operations whose duties include revitalizing the trial advocacy program for attorneys and developing robust skills, development skills for legal secretaries, investigators, social workers, and mitigation specialists. Next slide, please. To transform economic development, goal two, 15 objectives and 26 milestone activities were identified. Progress towards this goal is at 53%. In terms of status, 38% of milestone activities have been completed and 42% are on track. Disruptions were noted with four milestone activities. Additionally, one milestone activity was discontinued. Now, next slide, please. This slide provides more detail on eight of the fourteen objectives that support transforming economic development. In blue are the objectives that have been completed, objective two and objective seven. Activities under these objectives include work by the Economic Development Director with the Borderflex to create a strategy on business attraction by industry. This includes serving what necessary infrastructure, specific high-wage industries need for relocation, high-speed internet, and identifying available office and warehouse space. In green are objectives that are on track, including efforts to increase commercial tax base, support the creation of a regional workforce development plan, and fully develop and invest in the Fabinz Airport. Efforts to support a regional workforce development plan include collaborating closely with Workforce Solutions Borderflex and to use data and understanding of the region's workforce needs to and to strategically develop programs. To fully develop and invest in the Fabinz Airport, economic development staff have leveraged partnerships with military-affiliated organizations such as Alliance of Regional Military Support Arms to apply for an EDA grant that will expand the number of hangars at the Fabinz Airport. Milestones that experienced some level of disruption included the development of an economic development master plan. This project was put on hold during the transition of leadership. The Economic Development Strategic Plan is partially developed and final completion is expected in January of 2022. A major disruption was noted with objective aid. Attract and support more options for transit connectivity, direct routes, including flights and train. Economic development staff is currently working on a face-end post-COVID plan, and the subject should be back on track. Next slide, please. This slide provides nine through objective 14 of goal two. Objective 11, invest in big transformative projects that attract investment businesses, people, like the San Antonio River Restoration Project. The objectives related to milestone activities have been completed. Work continues on objectives 10, 12, and 13. Highlights of ongoing work include acquiring necessary right-of-way to develop research park facilities with the airport footprint. Economic development staff is still awaiting the final approval of the Federal Aviation Administration regarding the proposed airport layout drawing for the Fabinz Airport. Once approved, the business development plan becomes completely effective and in future investment in property or infrastructure may proceed through the normal process. FAA has experienced delays in review due to the pandemic. Next slide, please. To increase tourism, the court identified eight objectives and staff implemented 18 milestone activities to achieve this goal. Progress for this goal is at 35%. And in terms of status, 22% of milestone activities have been completed, 50 are on track, and 17 were discontinued, and about 11% experienced some level of disruption. Next slide, please. As illustrated in this slide, two objectives have been completed. Specifically, milestones, activities related to objective one and five. Activity completed under objective one includes the economic development staff partnering with MBA students from UTEP to conduct business climate analysis of businesses operating along the Mission Trail. The information and data gathered will be utilized to further further initiatives. These actions completed actions completed under objective five, develop a Mission Trail master plan, including presentation by the project consultant, a final draft of the plan to the court on September 23, 2019. The economic development staff is working on and is working with planning department to implement some of the ideas presented. Ongoing activity continues under objective two, further historic preservation efforts. Objective three, invest in aesthetic the meadows and in all abilities playground to increase visitors to the park. And objective seven, explore the amphitheater. Some of the highlights of the work under objective three include months onboard. Architects submitted aesthetic the park playground plans to public works engineers for approval this past February. Two milestone activities were disrupted due to the prohibition of events at the county parks, and several milestones were discontinued due to lack of visibility. These projects include collaboration with city of El Paso, Socorro, San Luisario, and Tecto for utility relocation along Socorro. The relocation of utility lines was not a feasible project. Adding river cruises was also discontinued, and relocating the river to add vibrancy to downtown in San Luisario were also discontinued. Next slide, please. To appear infrastructure, goal four, includes eight objectives that were outlined and 35 milestone activities that were implemented. Progress is at 70%. And in terms of status, 40% of milestone activities were completed, 46% are on track. There was some disruption in about 9% of activities, and further two milestone activities were discontinued. Next slide, please. One objective, objective five, was completed, which entails supporting the development of fiber infrastructure to create platform for tech boom, higher incomes, and increased employment. Milestones completed under these objectives include conducting research and outreach to utility providers related to the installation of dark fiber along county transportation projects. Further, locations of all new fiber infrastructure is determined by each fiber object agency and spaces provided along roadway, parkways, and underneath sidewalks. On track includes miles, objective one, build infrastructure to meet the needs of community. Objective four, downtown revitalization, participation via world-class county facility and garage. Objective six, building sustainable neighborhood and parks for families to thrive. And objective seven, promote sustainable development. Highlights of these activities include activity under objective four, facilities maintenance has installed about 3% of LED lights in the employee parking garage, and installations are ongoing. A disruption noted is related to the milestone activity under objective two. Contract TTI to consult route planning for service improvements. The project is about at 90% complete and is pending the development of a transit LGC to ensure that service improvements are presented accordingly to the agency that will be responsible for expanding its transit throughout the community. Disruption was also noted under objective three and related to the Fabinz Airport hangar, specifically pending again the determination of Economic Development Administration whether or not federal CARES Act grant will be made to this project. Next slide, please. To promote collaboration and engagement, goal five, nine objectives and 16 milestone activities were implemented. The progress in achieving this goal is at 45%. Status of milestone is as follows. 38% have been completed, 50% are on track. There was some disruption in one of the milestone activities, and one was discontinued. Next slide, please. Objective two, the objective and objective six were completed. Examples of completed work under objective two include El Paso among the best census participation with measurable improvements, including an investment of $375,000 in marketing efforts. Develop the one-of-a-kind interactive heat map that the entire community was using to target strategies and resources. Participated intensely in all communities and participated in phone banking. Ongoing work continues under objective three, collaborate internally to increase cohesion and obtain results. Objective four, collaborate externally to achieve better outcomes. Objective five, communicate and market the county broadly. And objective seven, apply and receive various national recognitions. Objective eight, achieve best place to work. And objective nine, achieve community and excellence awards. Highlights of the work includes includes and specific to objective five, a new county seal that has been created and the final approval of a county logo before moving forward with a county brand book. Next slide, please. To advance community support services, goal six, eight objectives and 19 milestone activities were created and implemented by staff. Progress towards achieving this goal is at 78%. And in terms of status, 58% of milestones have been completed, 26 are on track, and five experienced disruption and two milestones were discontinued. Next slide, please. Objectives completed include objective one, addressing public housing. Objective four, create a digital library. Objective six, create office of new Americans. And objective eight, implement a kiosk to find nearest available housing. Examples of completed work under objective eight include informing the homeless population of bed availability in local shelters through the collaboration with other agencies. Work continues and is on track for an objective two, objective five, and objective seven. Examples of ongoing work under objective seven, identify and support pilot programs and other programs that assist with the education and job training too. Specifically, the HR department will continue to work on regional training programs with other organizations to help further job training. And also continue to look for opportunities to support staff and their educational attainment. A disruption was noted in the DRO bus voucher process. All bus passes the DRO received were fully utilized and probationers that were placed on community supervision. However, due to COVID-19, community supervision probationers are reporting digitally. The process for voucher dispersment will be reevaluated after the pandemic restrictions are lifted and there is a need. Next slide, please. Next, goal seven, value El Paso family. The progress towards achieving this goal is at 49%. And this goal includes eight objectives and 16 milestone activities. The status of milestone activities is as follows. 38% were completed, 19% are on track, 13% had some disruption, and 31% were discontinued. Next slide, please. Objective three was completed, and activities related to this objective include analyzing the position graded lower than $15 an hour and creating a plan to increase duties, skills, and qualifications that will allow for training and development and with the intent of eliminating the G scale lower than $15 an hour each year by 2023. On track, objectives include the study of employees to learn what drives retention and respond and act on findings. H R is currently administering a Gallup survey to county employees. The survey is scheduled to close in the next few days. The data will be analyzed and best practices and areas of need will be identified. Next slide please. To strengthen financial health, eight objectives and twenty-one milestone activities were identified and implemented. Progress for this goal stands at seventy percent. Thirty-eight percent of milestones have been completed, forty-three are on track, and nine had some disruption. Further nine percent were discontinued. Next slide please. Objective Six was completed, earned the popular financial reporting award. Budget and brief was submitted for consideration for this award in March third, twenty twenty-one. Disruptions due to the pandemic was noted for Objective One and related to exploring opportunities for sponsorships and advertising specific to the sports park and partnering with health provider agencies to improve community health and wellness. Objectives that are on track include Objective One, align revenue and expense growth. Objective Two, reduce costs of incarceration with reduced populations. Objective Four, fund technology efforts to reach the provider service to all people we serve. And Objective Five, have a participatory budget. The work done to advance Objective Five includes collaborations between budget executive director and strategic performance manager to develop a rollout plan and a survey. The survey will be launched later this year. The milestones that were discontinued were merged into current objectives and are on track. Next slide please. Lastly, to optimize internal processes, Goal Nine, five objectives and fourteen milestone activities were identified and implemented. Progress is at seventy-one percent. Fifty percent of objectives were completed, thirty-six percent are on track, and seven of the milestones experienced some level of disruption, and seven percent were discontinued. This slide please. Completed milestone objectives include Objective Four, evaluate current businesses practice. Objective Five, implement a management system such as Lean Six Sigma. I'm pleased to report that the first Lean training was held on March thirtieth of this year, and two more trainings are scheduled in June and September. The feedback from the staff that participated in the Lean one-on-one training was very favorable, and training was found to be useful. Objectives that were on track include enable data-driven decision-making and improve county public works development output. Progress related to Objective Two include vendor e-plan soft company has been coordinating with staff from the Planning and Development Department to implement a plan review software so that, so the public can submit plans electronically and also for county to process and review the plans more efficiently. Next slide please. And with that last update, we have informed you of the progress and status of the strategic plan for the second quarter of fiscal year twenty twenty-one. These updates together show that the progress has been successful in moving forward the goals of strategic plan in advancing the vision, mission, core values of excellence, professionalism, integrity, and creativity. I'm open to addressing any questions you may have.
Any questions? I know we. Yes, thank you. Any questions, Commissioners? Dr. Madrigal, thank you. We're taking some very important steps towards a very, like I've said, a very pivotal strategic planning that's coming up. Betsy, any additional comments from you?
Judge, Commissioners, I will tell you, this is, in this virtual world, this is one area where it's, we'd love to spend a lot more time. I know Dr. Madrigal gave a very quick overview on each of the nine goals, and we're always available, and this information's always available to the public through our website and through, you just search strategic plan, and it gives you the link to take you right to all the information that Dr. Madrigal just presented. And there's live updates all the time being added by departments as progress is made on each milestone activity. But in a virtual world, this is, this is a broad overview. We're always happy to discuss any, any status on any of the projects. I wish we almost had a video of, yesterday as I drove by the Fabin's Airport on the way out to Commissioner Olgane's grand opening, I was looking at the airport and how much progress has been made and how much better the airport looks. It's phenomenal. The fencing, the gate, the runway itself, it's just, you, to capture the work that has been done by our organization and under your leadership, you know, this presentation, it just, you, I, there is no way to really show the significance of the progress that has been made. I really appreciate Dr. Madrigal's overview, but I, getting out there and actually seeing these things happening in the community is where you can tell the progress.
No, and Betsy, now I really encourage each and every one of us because this is a type of, we're going into a, you know, day and a half kind of situation that's going to require tremendous amount of research on our part so that we could deal with the high-level decisions that we have to make. And when I met with the consultant, I did say, you know, it's, there's times where there's a lot of philosophy and fluff and working on wording and the mission statements and, but this is not one of those situations. It's really one where we really need to be very prepared to make some, some very, you know, directions and decisions as to how we're moving forward. So it's going to take a tremendous amount of, from each one of our staff and ourselves to really be prepared and be able to go in understanding things at a higher level. So Betsy, thank you. It's been a pleasure just to see the, the amount, and like you said, we can all go into different areas and find out what we need to be looking at and being prepared for the session coming up. Betsy, anything else that we need to?
No, sir. As you, the, in closing, generally the court adopts a five-year plan. So we are a little over a year and a half into this five-year plan. And as you all meet again, it will update the five-year plan. So even though it's a five-year plan, it is a breathing, living, breathing document, as you mentioned, Judge. I imagine this American Rescue Plan is going to have a major impact on your upcoming strategic plan and your focus and where we will be prioritizing projects. We look forward to working with you all. This direction that you provide to us is, it's invaluable. I mean, we, we need this direction from the court. It really helps us to focus and prioritize what the court knows will help move forward for our community.
Thank you. Caesar, back to you.
Thank you, sir. Item number nine, receive a presentation on the second quarter projections for revenues, expenditures, and fund balance for fiscal year two thousand twenty-one through fiscal year two thousand twenty-five.
Good morning, Judge and Commissioners. Wally Hargrove, Director of Budget and Fiscal Policy. Today's item is the second quarterly update of the current year projected revenues, expenses, and fund balance. If you'll go to the next slide, please. Today's projection will provide you with actual results for the past five years as well as a projection for the year-ended fiscal year twenty and the upcoming five years. These projections are one of the tools that we use to assist you, the Commissioners Court, and county staff with the future budget, tax rate, and capital planning. We'll be reviewing today's estimates in both tabular and graphical views, followed by estimated budget utilization, reserves, and estimated days of cash on hand. Next slide please. Our historical and projected revenues are shown on the top line of this graph highlighted in green. In the center, you'll find the historical and projected expenditures highlighted in red, followed by the fund balance reserve at the bottom of the table, which has mixed green and red highlights. When the bottom shading is green, it indicates positive growth in our reserves, while red projects a reduction in future reserves when expenditures are expected to exceed revenues. With that, I'll bring your attention to the center of the table for fiscal year twenty that just ended. As you can see, we'll again finish in a positive position. This certainly is mostly due to two favorable revenue trends related to both property and sales tax. In addition, as noted by Ms. Keller during her presentation this morning, the affirmative action that the county took based on the recommendations to reduce the budget and spending mid-year in preparation for fiscal impacts caused by the pandemic. For this, again, we are thankful to the elected and appointed officials, as well as the county workforce that rose up to meet that challenge. As can be seen in the next column just to the right for fiscal year twenty twenty-one, preliminary projections indicate the county is likely to consume about nine million dollars in our reserves. That estimate is mainly based in our allocation of our emergency reserve for our new Faster Economic Business Assistance Program that was intended to aid our business community with the impacts of the pandemic. As we do get additional information on items such as property tax valuations, we will update these numbers. Also, when we develop our twenty-two budget and later years, we'll also present to the court a strategic plan with the goal of rebuilding those reserves back up to an adequate level to both maintain our operations and our fiscal strength. Next slide please. This slide is merely a graphical linear representation of the amounts from the prior table. As you grew, as you view the chart from the left to the right, the top plum-colored line represents the county's general fund revenue, excuse me. While the blue line below represents our prior actual and future projected expenses. Black line on the bottom is our historic actual and future projected reserves. I'll bring your attention to fiscal year twenty twenty-two. As I noted in the prior slide, this is when we anticipate our revenues and expenses will intersect and have a direct impact on our future reserve levels. Of course, as you just heard from Dr. Madrigal, under our strategic plan, our goal is to align future projected revenues and projected expenses and to manage our reserves and prevent significant unplanned erosion. This will also provide the county with a fiscal ability to withstand future economic downturns as we did this year and as we have in the past. We have had a preliminary meeting with the Appraisal District, and we are expected to see a rise in residential values. Home inventories unfortunately are very, very low, and sales prices right now are on the rise. However, we're not expecting significant change in commercial values, and the protest on commercial values in this area are on the rise this year as well. Sales tax receipts remain strong and continue to rise near pre-pandemic growth, even though our border closures continue to impact local sales. Next slide please. Now, as you can see in the far right column in fiscal year twenty, our largest expense, which is typical year to year, our salary and fringe benefits. They finished the year with just under four point five percent unspent, which is slightly more than average, while our operating budget finished with about thirty-eight percent unspent. The two main factors attributing to that trend, first, our mid-year budget reductions that we did, and the reduced spending resulting from operational changes that were created by the pandemic. Secondly, in the operating category, in accordance with policy, a large portion of our unspent budget is from our budgeted reserves of ninety percent in accordance with our financial policies. I'll bring your attention to the bottom far right area of the slide. You'll see that again, we met our reserve goal of between ten to fifteen percent for fiscal year twenty. We should finish up right in the fourteen and a half percent range. And the reserves are the equivalent of just over a hundred and sixteen days of cash on hand. Very, very similar to what I reported to you in fiscal year, in the first quarter of the fiscal year. So we are certainly staying, remaining stable. We'll also hit our target goal of having between ninety and a hundred and twenty days of operating capital on hand. Next slide please. That concludes today's presentation. Our team's currently working on budget reviews and recommendations for county administration and the Commissioners Court. We're working closely with the Auditor's Office on revenue and fund balance projections, as well as looking at the revenue possibilities we have to recoup through the ARPA project and preparing ourselves for your upcoming budget hearings in August. With that, I'm available with any questions the court may have.
Thank you, Wally. Appreciate that presentation. Commissioners, any comments, questions on? Okay, if hearing none, thank you, Wally. Caesar?
Yes, sir.
And this completes all the items on our agenda this morning, Judge.
Well, I want to thank all of you. I just really, when you hear some news like today in Edward Dion's team, you know, the loss of Rodney Alexander Olivas that passed today, and just very heartfelt and for the family of, our county family, but in specifically for our Auditor's Department and what they're going to go through and, you know, just very heartfelt, but our condolences, Mr. Dion, to you and your team and just whatever we could do to make things a little bit better for the family. So we thank you for that. Thank you. You have, Wally, you wanted a comment, please?
Judge, if I may, I had the distinct privilege of working hand in hand with Mr. Olivas for over two decades. His wife, former county employee, Yvette Olivas, was one of our budget supervisors also for almost two decades. And from the, from the staff and team, from the budget and fiscal policy, our condolences go out to the family. He truly will not be forgotten. His spirit, his attitude, and the bright light that he shined upon county operations and to county employees across the county will not be forgotten. And with that, we would like to send our regards and our condolences to the Auditor's Office.
Thank you so much for that. Thank you so much for that additional thoughts and about this person. So, thank you very much. Well, we leave you with that. Thank you, everyone, for this very productive. I think it's, like I said, it's teeing it up a little better every time for strategic planning. And I'll say it over and over again, I think we need to feel on our shoulders that it is a very pivotal time that we'll really, we'll look back and we know that a lot of great things are going to happen because we get different funding, we have different opportunities. To me, it's an unprecedented opportunity for each one of us to feel a huge part of making a difference for our community. So a very, you know, very, need to be very thoughtful, and I think we're just very, very fortunate to have Betsy and her team and Madrigal and everybody else, you know, getting us ready for such an important situation, as well as Wally and, and, and and Mr. Dion and everyone that needs to come together. So I apologize, but I take these things a little heavy. So anyway, everybody have a good evening. Thank you.
Thank you, Judge. This concludes today's meeting at eleven thirty-nine AM.
Thank you, meeting adjourned. Thank you.
Thank you, Judge.